Good evening, everyone. I'm glad to have possibly given a couple of seconds to listen to the committee reports to be heard clearly. So my intention is to only hear what I want to hear and probably help you on that. So I wanted it in advance that I could ask you to keep yourself or say it or something or whatever. We all do our best to control our ethics at least and move towards the right direction, getting back to what we thought was the normal thing or something. I understand that there are no other questions being raised, so the section of consultants I've learned that they're not their place. So therefore, I'll stay into the meeting and we're about to move to twelve. Can I have any declarations of the responsible community's interest as to everything I know and still the main matter for us to say if we should do so any now?
Yes, Councilor Croft, I'm Ian Robinson.
Thank you very much. At minutes, Chris Crum, please return. And now on to item fourteen, which is minutes on the full count of the twenty seventh, which we were asked to confer. Many of you will agree, if not, I'll ask you to accept that you bend the forehand and I'm happy with it. Are there any comments to be made? Well, there is certainly one from perhaps for rights of spirit, do you please?
There, just a report from County District Council, Sir Coe, I think it was, yes, E R C O, Sir Coe. And County White, okay, then bottom, we've got Button Island, oh, no, I think you changed to Buzz. And I had these years ago, the filter's changing more than being in duty here.
Thank you very much. Are there significant improvements anymore? Can I ask colleagues to say that you are happy to regard these minutes as an accurate record?
Very good.
Thank you very much, everybody. So on to item fifteen, which is committee reports. No, it's not. Hold on.
Sorry.
On to fourteen, but two colleagues. To congratulate the man who has been held the twenty first of May is to record again. I hope you're going to say yes. Are there any comments on that one, please? Can you indicate, please, that you're happy with it to regard these as an accurate record? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Councilman, oh, yeah, 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 sorry.
I thought I might get beyond fourteen before I miss something out. It's a standard trip with me to miss things out trying to hurry so long, but at fifteen now, so committee reports. To receive the following, just the art committee first, would this be announced at Terry, please?
Thank you very much, Mr Mayor. These are the minutes of the committee's man in the property committee from the fifth of May. There's no recommendations, it's all resolved, this is, so move the minutes.
Thank you very much indeed. Are the minutes accepted, apologies?
Three.
Thank you very much. And on to planning, which is hidden somewhere in my pack. But as I was the chair, can I submit to you the under for minutes of the planning committee of the twelfth? Again, there are no recommendations. Can I ask if anyone wants to comment on any of those minutes, please? And seeing no answers to that, can I ask a different question? Will you please ascend to the minutes of the planning committee? Okay, thank you very much indeed. So now on to person there, and this was the eighteenth. Perhaps the brave ones, okay.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'd like to propose a far greater of the active mind. The only thing is, really says it is virtually every work, works it together, not in the worst at all. It's popping in a room. Okay, that's a bit disagreeable. Everything was resolved, so therefore.
Sorry, can I just have a chat? Wasn't it a virtual meeting?
No, no, it's real. We were actually sat in it.
It was private, you know.
No, it's after.
What did you?
No, it was a little.
I bet he was in here.
He was in here because it was after the date that we weren't allowed to have much meeting.
Look how much you changed.
So yes, we were actually here for a proper meeting.
We have to be on to appropriate moment. Everyone, okay, thank you very much, Ian Roy. On to finance, perhaps a change, I guess.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'd like to present the minutes of the reality finance meeting held on Tuesday, the eighteenth of May. There are three recommendations.
What do I have to do with the recommendations or do I want to go through one by one?
If I may, with the council's permission, I'd like to take them all on that because they are standard operational items. So the first recommendation is that finance committee approve making of payments in appendix A. That the town council adopt the income expenditure report as attached in appendix B. And the county council will approve the schedule of reserves attached as appendix C, please.
Council Brave, please. Oh, you're saying yes, okay, that's even better, I like it. We can have some complaints on the second, don't we? As it might, it is a recommendation. Can I have your answer? We should make, write that on the floor.
I have a proposal for you, Mr Mayor.
Deputy Mayor has proposed to the second, yes, Council Brave, thank you, Roy. All in favour, please? Lovely, thank you very much indeed. That's three recommendations until, I think you're now saying, are you willing to take it to purpose to move it, please?
If we can move the minutes, please, Mr Mayor.
Thank you very much for that. Everyone agreed with these minutes?
Agreed.
Jolly good, that takes all progress so far, thank you very much indeed. And we move now to the Ben Committee. Can we have a proposal for that, please? Quite sure it's a good test. We've lost him.
And how many votes have the County White put that remain people thousand minutes and that we need that four to somebody else?
Thank you. You, uh, Council Brave. Most led to this meeting, kind of pretty hard lighting, right? As there are no recommendations. I'm going to involve better, so it's page one, two, three, two minutes. Thank you very much. I'm sure we're going to agree, we're happy with that. Okay, thank you very much indeed. That deals with the committee reports. Colleagues, so on to sixteen, Mayor's remark and reports. I have a part of report from former mayor, I don't know whether anyone else has, apart from what's here. So the new mayors have a very busy ride so far. They spent a certain time on updates and other difficulties, so there's nothing more to report there. So I'm happy to move on to seventeen, town council representatives on other bodies. I'm struggling to keep up the pages, so if you give me time to turn over a look to see if I've got all that one. Have you got it? Sorry, colleagues, I'm looking for.
Sorry, that should have just started down from the Ben report. From the mayor's remark.
Here we are, here we are. There, I'll turn the list up here.
Can I help you?
Okay, let's do that. I'm going to suggest that we do, we do go round our own, that's okay, Chris, we'll just take over this and quickly say. There are a lot of things to say about it, so I'll take you in the anti-clockwise of the stop, the definitely is.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I have a special report on my Wednesday, all the ready, I'm sure, all the deaf music project, which I represent.
Thank you. This is the one, the representative country needs to assert a level of attack power. I think that is the answer, number, I think, as you there. And a lot of questions, so I asked them, it was difficult for you to pose an alternative, I considered it just catch up. But where things are at, but I did make a couple of things and hopefully they are moving in progress. And I'm not to report, but there's been minutes there, I'm sure. Head to James, head to German, we're finishing, we're on the latest position, okay. Thank you, Councilor Jerry, please. And to everybody, Mr Brave, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. As far as the dark horse thing is concerned, there are lots of things happening. Hopefully they go broken. And we can, even if first we can, uh, maybe as I was doing, and we're part of that, and they're part of the case. But that's all I have.
Thank you, Ross Roy, House of Commons.
Yes, thank you, Mr Mayor. Much to say, this is really, which obviously is the only children. The sad thing is that the Wootin Stade, anybody there, love to go there or not be packing again this year. I'm not sure why, I don't know, what the big girls are, I suppose, they couldn't read the third instructions, I'm not sure, because there's so many going there. And have met the, the answer is, so, um, there's no, hopefully, there's a moment of the year we can use that, if we talk about.
Thank you very much. As Taylor. Just remind me which bit, well, Mr Mayor.
That's, that's.
I was running, I was, I was, I was. I said something, it's your chance now. There you go. Yeah, please. The only option I think I've done recently, Mr Mayor, I told Sean because of the head hold. Monday, the seventeenth, the Thetford Business Awards, some place fair to, Tom's paying hotel. And even a great success, there was all the seventy local businesses taking part. And they all had a good evening and I took part in that as a member of the back news lab, it was a very good evening. You, Mr Mayor, will take a more supportive role with the business awards this year than the previous mayor did. And also the nice passion to you from the founders that they look forward to seeing you there on the twenty first, due for the prize giving. Thank you. Thank you very much. I've allowed that item because I think it's of interest, I think certainly we should, at least it's supposed to be aware of whether we have an official record of it or not. So moving on, next page. I have a report, Mr Mayor.
Nothing to be proved, sir.
Thank you very much, everybody. It's now eighteen, so reports from county and district councillors, I'm, I think, taking in the same order. It's nice and simple and easy for me, I might get it right, so. Deputy Mayor, which first?
Thank you, sir. My dear, if I keep up with county council, yes, in a little bit, we're doing what's most training at the moment, so thank you. That's supposed to be supporting me since the May and I suppose I didn't, I'm still here to support you, so that's not wrong at all. I'm delighted that County German has put through his report. Contrary to comfortably, we aren't in that third, we are here to represent Thetford's needs to all the county council. And also to represent all the county council to the residents of Thetford. And we have literally walked out of the polling station, the council station, and we're talking about how we work together to improve this. So there are some ideas, the machine that Terry has circulated. The reason why I draw your attention to that is part of them are in my area, part of them are in Terry's. And it's about working together to get what's around in Thetford. So I'm finding my feet talking out of council side things, so bear with me, I'll watch this space. In terms of reckless matters, following on from the comments that have been made to many of us councillors regarding the state of the town. I was delighted to see a workforce of five litter pickers over the first weekend in May in the town centre. And since then, on a daily basis, I've seen them each two going around picking litter up. I think the, it's wonderful that by reckless, and so they've responded to our concerns. I still find it really sad that they have to respond to those concerns because people can't take that part of themselves. But it's great that we're working together again, we have had a united voice and we've got some things done. So I would always say that it's worth sharing with us, talking to us, engaging with us. And we can get stuff done if we work together rather than just complaining, so thank you.
Thank you very much indeed, Head to James.
Thank you very much, Mr Mayor. And Chris Crum is very funny, he did that, obviously, in my report in advance for you to see. And just following up from James' comments there, I think that the sort of issue of underpasses in Thetford are a really good example of where it doesn't actually matter if they're in Thetford East physically or in Thetford West. Because I'm a resident of South Dittergall, and the latest estate which is in the west, contact me weekly, if not daily, about a state of the underpass in Munford Road, which is in east. It doesn't matter where you live in Thetford, there's a lot of competition where there are opportunities for us to work together. And I think that can really encourage me because there are some things that affect all of us regardless of where we live. And as it happens, I've got a meeting tomorrow with the highways officer from council, I put a couple of bullet points at the top there. And some of the things that I want to talk to him about, endorse, things that have been around for a while, and things that were reiterated, shall we say, during the election campaign. And the first one is the very road issue there. Again, it's unintended consequences where they put the new speed camera up on every road. And I had three different households contacted me about the amount of ramp running on the speed that's now occurring. Where people sort of get round the back bit of every road to work with the speed camera. So there's a couple of bits and pieces there, road signage and road signage, again, it's again valuable for James' area. And the line of brand road is to get Munford Road and it's very good way. And that's just my initial list of what could be done to improve some of the underpasses in Thetford. James and I, in a few weeks' time, to discuss further. I mean, I don't have to share it, but I think they should, it's a thousand words. You know, our underpasses in Thetford have been neglected for a long while, they're four of them in a complete condition. And we want, as you're saying, we want people to use them, and they aren't being cleaned or, I mean, very offensive things, we've got some cases removed. And people won't use it, it's as simple as that, there's some very simple maintenance issues and absolute more detailed issues as well that we picked out. So that's, that's going to be one of my projects and one of James', I'm sure, which suggests underpasses over, probably not even next year, because several years, I should do. And the other issues on the review page there, the area of the press over the next few weeks, no doubt, back mileage question link. What's that got to do with us in Thetford? The northern county council contribution to that is going to be significant, tens of millions of pounds. Therefore, it's absolutely crucial that that project meets its budget. If it goes over its budget, then the financial implications will be more significant. And therefore, there's less money for us to spend on things like underpasses, for example, in Thetford. So I will be attending the meeting on the seventh of June, especially to the four councillors, to talk about that single issue. And then just followed on, to James' comments there about Surco. There has been a noticeable improvement in Surco's performance in Thetford over the last few weeks. On a Sunday, I saw a Surco person in town clearing around, literally removing cigarette boxes. And not normally as it has, or as that I would suggest. And then on back on the Monday, I saw a Surco chap picking litter out of the river. That's probably the first one ever since, literally, video of him banging and fishing out, so I fed that back and said that I would really encourage to see that. And has been a bit of disappointment about weed killer usage in Thetford, rather than strictly around signs and that place. And it's been a bit of an issue of weed killer being banned, which is also slightly very bad for the environment, so we've been making some reports about that. And reckless has confirmed that that's really happening, so do let us know if you see any of that around. And I think this is the sort of start of things to come, I hope, with Surco, there's sort of scrutiny that's been applied, which has been successful, I hope, with the underpasses. And then nicely, there's a couple of posters there, bits and pieces that have been reported before and after on the left, St John's Way, and a couple of bits there on the right, the price team way. And St Martin's Way, of course, but so happy to take James' question as usual. But Chris is a pretty nice takeaway, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. I'd just like to say, to tell you, James' report, James' comments as well. It's absolutely brilliant that, you know, you've got combined force to tackle these problems in the town now, which is, you know, it's absolutely brilliant news. I say, I'm aware where they shouldn't be spraying. Munford Road, I've got no end of weather, we've noise my ear now, as I was about to say, at the end of the past minutes, I've all done that tonight, come down. It's worse. I came in speaking with Dave Jacken a couple of, three years ago, and he said that they were going to remove the tax, and this one of your ideas, suggestions on it. He actually said they were going to do that and take it to the academy. I mean, a lot of our work, I don't know what they're doing, because they were feeding, some have been set by to, some have been removed. So, but I'm really, just to say thank you for this and thank you for sort now underpasses as well.
Joe, if you want to reply to that also?
No, just to say to James, it really, and I think it's best, James, we actually see some action because.
It was the other, it was the other.
And James and I, I'm sure, we're going to give it a go, and I think it's best.
I've simply got no to tell about the background of the papers, am I right, okay? Just on one of the questions, Jeremy's point there, I remember when I was at Reckland, the leader at the time, graffiti infested a priority to get rid of. Is there any way, a bit of pressure on Sam Chapman, I don't know, trying out of his pocket to sort some of the, I believe, you're saying, correct?
I remember the underpasses, they are very mainly owned by all the county council. I remember the underpasses, they are very vaguely owned by the Norfolk County Council, and they do have responsibilities to pay. As generous as Reckland might be, I don't think they're keeping up for county council underpasses, but where there are Reckland-owned assets, if you like, that have a fee to own, you know, we'll make sure that Reckland clean them up. So it might be stretched too far to get them to clean off instead.
Thank you. I have just a question for Jamie. Jamie, I understand that they mixed the underpass and not only cash 22, it's an interview. Were they approached, Kate, saying which was going to work, about our sand, as they know, by you and really it's near? Is that correct? Are cash 22 still involved?
Yeah, so I was asked last week to get permission from Norfolk County Council for cash 22 and my office, for them to have permission to go as volunteers, which is very generous with cash 22 and my, I think that's planned for this weekend, actually, but I can't understand why they would say no to it that way, but that's what the plan is. And similarly, as Jamie mentioned, Seaford County are involved in the underpass up there of removing the Royal Bureau, so I think there's quite a lot of good work up there. So liaising to the council and those volunteers, I think it's moving.
Thank you very much for the questions and answers. And perhaps the brain, do you have a report?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Just to go, to say that I have become chairman of Reckland, which is a quite a lot for me personally, I'm looking forward to trying to promote with Seaford, the civic side of Reckland, because it's the opportunity to have the oldest fraternity in the country yourself and one of the newer chair positions being active again. So I'm looking forward to working with you and hopefully we will do some good things in the civic side of Seaford.
Thank you very much, Mr Chair, the Reckland, congratulations on that. I think that covers the councils apart from myself and our partners, whatever they said, so thanks a lot. We just talked about it again. So with your agreement, colleagues, I'm going to move on to item 19, which is the sale of land item. I'm going to remind you that this is a piece of land adjacent to number 30, Scunford Road in Seaford, which, you will remember, has been through various stages to lead towards the possibility of the land being sold by the Norfolk County Council to the owner of number 30. I'm just going to be a bit more with them, afraid. Can I ask, has any colleague seen this piece of land since this proposal was made? Well, if you're Roy now, okay, thank you very much. Just briefly describe it, Roy Way, which we're on it in particular, but other colleagues are obviously welcome to. It's a small piece of land next door to number 30, which is, it's about the end wall of number 30, which is a back wall, as you expect from a building, and a back fence, wooden fence. It's used occasionally by dog walkers and by games players. There is in fact a football goal, completely disneyed, lined up against the wall of the house. I would imagine that if you, if you score a goal or if you miss a goal, then the people in the house hear, they're detecting the thumping noise upon their wall. And they'd ask to buy a piece of land adjacent to their wall, which they say they would like to use for car park, and they can certainly have the option, of course, to insist, there's nothing else you can do with it, and they'd be defensive, they'd like to consider. In the centre of this piece of land, there is also a fenced off area which has a standard public seat and a gate to get in. It looks as if it ought to have become a play area and never did. So it's a moderately attractive piece of land within, happens in the area, so houses on two sides, a hedge at the far side and at the front of the road, and then houses beyond on the other side of the road. I have been approached by a councillor today who's interested in selling the sale, and I'm repented to some extent what I've been told, although I did visit it as well just today. And I'm just asking you to consider whether you've given it the fullest consideration that we ought to do, and I think if, if Roy did want to say something, and if I could do that now, then invite other colleagues to do so, because you might be a bit familiar with the piece of land.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Yes, this is actually been going on for some time, the group in that, in that house, came some time ago and asked for the possibility. As you say, it is, it is an area that tends to be used more also by a little bit of football against the wall and that sort of thing than anybody else. I went through there on the news occasion, and I know that the families who live in the small bodies here, walk lots of bodies there, but there's very few covers. I did have a wander around, which went to one of the critical, and I didn't definitely say I'm going to get it to her. To be honest, anybody wishing to provide support off road parking up there is going to be applauded by law, I think, because the biggest problem with that is that there is just not that profile. And I think perhaps it might be something that we all could do, to say, yes, well, we are, we are more prone to do it, but to say, I couldn't find anyone that did, you know, that would get it high.
Thank you very much. Are there any other comments on this, colleagues? I've got councillor Wright, yeah, so councillor, is there?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I've been contacted by a resident, I am aware of the set this plan. I haven't been since, we considered this, but I am aware of it, but a resident did contact me to say that this type of site may form a dangerous precedent. It's a legitimate green space and was a strip racing, it would be significant, there would be nothing to prevent this strictly act in the future. Nothing here to stop other relevant forwarding campaigns to make similar risks versus the reckless taking. The planning application, planning force last year was to increase the size of the property, possibly, you know, the English property size is too much for the problem, it stands for, hence they require further power. We were to reduce the use of private ground for this space, and so this direction of traffic may seem inappropriate, and because of the schools involved, it surely is not a financial grant for us to generate income. And indeed, if you should develop plans within the town to be driven back, the individual who's sending this would offer 10% in excess of existing power on the table. So that was the remarks I'd just asked, and I've said over the remainder of the council. Section 127 of the early development provides that we may dispose of land, subject to requirement to secure the best consideration that we can. That was in mind for that earlier comment, the name of further integration of the bottom table, so that's something we have to consider. If the immunity band is deemed a couple of space, we need to advertise in the post sale to be the other newspaper to respect it with, and consider any objections received. So I think that's just the mechanics of the process that we're about to go through. But my personal view is that I'm quite convinced that this estate is a good example of the modern development, the future of that is looking to develop in depth, despite reducing the parking spaces out there, which is what we're verted. The mixture of housing green spaces provides a good community feel, was providing immediate magic to residents. That's where the government was planning to develop a certain amount of green spaces for the density of the development. Prepare this to be a much larger animal to stay, where quite much we down the table, where we have a minimal useful community space for such a large place. So back to the stated questions, it seems provisioned with values by residents makes the development a desirable place to live and to actually, I don't know, community up there. Indeed, it's significant in the picture of dog most of the front of the port, said this amount in case it's used for recreational purposes. And whilst some might say the recreation ground is just around the corner, we've only got one piece of land to recreation space in town, and that recreation ground has more and more pressure and more fencing, which stops people using it in the way that we should be able to. So in saying that, objective Reckland, Northern County Council, passing on parcels immediately back into development, or be voting against it.
Thank you very much indeed. That's a voice.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I was just looking back, and I was contacted about this on the 21st of May, like 2020. Some of the residents contacted me about the, that they'd heard that the supply had been knocked out. I mean, at that time, there was nothing coming through, and I was checking the Reckland plans. There was nothing coming through, but obviously last year, May, March, November, so that's what, the emails from the, it's quite a rare residence, that's back in 2020. I'd have to go, I wouldn't go against that as well, I would agree with that.
Following the sounds of the guns on this one, Mr Mayor, just got a quick question. What is the order of property against the noise, the noise from the football? That's my question, we've got a lot to do. What, what is actually, is something driving mad, or is it trying to do a line run? I'm not sure. Wait, can we have more information on that?
When the application came through last, they were requesting it to be covered as a parking space, and the recommendation in valuation is was the council to decide to pursue the sale, that they put something in it that would say that nothing could ever be built on in any of the users of parking space. So as far as I'm aware, in the communications I've had, that they, or they said that they wanted for a driveway, I've happened around, I've convinced that more is ready for that to come through.
Come on, please. Yeah, just my first impression I heard there, the predominant noise, the household was against, are agreeing with councillor Wright, but I just want to throw in potentially a halfway house. If it is more about the noise, couldn't we do some sort of landscaping so people could enjoy the area? We cut the noise down for the tent and see if, you know, if we can meet halfway on that. But it all depends, if he's trying to get it for parking, but I don't mean anything to the noise, I would be coming in for the councillor's rights.
I think that's, that's a good point. Without that, the house has a single garage, and it has a crime plate, which I was thought would take two days to push, so that would give you three parking spaces. It can't be used alone, because there are building materials on there, my significant building materials, bricks in units of the southern east tables, and builders' sacks which contain sand and other building materials. So it is a slightly odd situation. I wonder whether an option might be to either simply push off it or say, let's see whether the neighbours are interested, or possibly say to the owners that we have concerns about selling land, which is recreation land, and we have had second thoughts, but that, we recognise it's very irritating for them to have football, something against the wall. If you haven't had this, you'll know it just pervades throughout into our building. And we need to put in some, it is on our lap, we need to put in some method of preventing that happen, whether it's a hedge or fence, or whether we can simply arrange for the dogs to be put in different locations, so that people are not being against that point anyway. That's my suggestion. But in the moment, I'll take Mark being a little, in the moment, I don't know if there's any proposal from a colleague.
No, I was just going to propose now, we parked this area, and I will look at it, because I'm totally unaware of this, and get some of the councillors to come back up the next week to the halfway house. My, this is being very clinical at the minute, we're going to be on the next one. I just think it needs to be looked at a little more than Dixon.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I totally agree with what Mark is saying, that we need to get it, and that's part of our committee, that's the agenda, and someone who has this inside to see what we can be done if we don't sell the land, or what we can do to check there outside, because I'm not sure this is what we've got, you know, if we've got to do outside.
Question.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. But Chris is sounding a bit blunt. All's on the issue. The one, the agenda item says, is the land surplus to need? I believe the discussions here have valued the immunity space that it provides, and I would suggest from the discussions that we've had, we are saying it is not surplus to need, it is very much needed, and although it's rare, we wouldn't be looking to do any disposal of the asset. If, as councillor Taylor points out, there should be a subsequent comment, complaint from residents, then yes, possibly we could look at that, but all noise is not the issue here. Is it surplus to our requirements? And the discussion seems to be quite clear that it's not.
Thank you very much. That's a good question.
Mr Mayor, just a quick question. The work dimension, they proposed that they were to make a little part of the board, the place, the space, there was a gap, and they didn't have a build to it. Did the, did you open the house, the person wanted to buy it, except that they did?
Yes, well, they paid for the valuation, and they were given the valuation, but they knew that that's a recommendation from the landlords, and they're asked to still look forward to the council.
There was another comment about applying a recommendation to extend the property as well, is that a bit wrong? And I was a bit confused about, first of all, getting a connection, parking space. And that seems, there seems to be, to be confusing, there was a plan to extend the property, that was a quality days after.
And I don't know where the land, this thing is a separate issue to the planning.
I think, well, did you want to come back, and then I've got councillor Wright as well? Yeah, I just think councillor, if you've made a usual, cruel shot, I'd just like to see if it can come in sensible, just, I mean, I could come around and kick a ball for the next two weeks on normal, just to see what you like in two weeks' time. I just think we need to explore it a bit more. Is the noise and people being there at ten o'clock at night spoiling the quality of life, where we could potentially help that out with a bit of thought? You know, I just, I think we should come up with that, because, you know, if we just clearly drew, say, no, I'm fed up with having a bad reputation as a town councillor. That's a right.
Just a point of clarification, planning application, I further suggest we completely the existing property, or existing consult, and not extending on this proposed approach to this added level of bank, existing.
That's a good question.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Well, to my point, it's not that I'm asking a question, Roy needs to make a decision on it, it's like after Jamie's mention, making decisions is not a problem, we have to have to, to decide whether we do it today or not. He's really trying to get all the other ones, trying to get the right information before the decision, that's why I have to say this. But I do agree that decision to be made, we do it one way or the other. People's point is that you should connect after the, and then think if you extended this property, and not going anywhere to waste.
That's a brave list.
It's meant, it's just a clear, it's the same box, that these people played, but they're playing in an environment, and then it's been a little bit, I just wondered if I was, that that resident, they've started a decision, and says that this surplus, I would have thought that, actually should have come to us and say, these are surplus requirement, and then, you know, it was, and, no, because I guess we are, we're responsible for the generation, I don't think, just things that back to the fact.
I think if you actually come to planning first, and then you were asked to, just see, I can't remember, so I remember, I was there, but basically, when, when the council sell land, because obviously we can't just do a valuation every time a resident reports a valuation of land, they were allowed, I spoke to the valuation kits, and they're allowed to request it as it's adjacent to their land, and so they requested it, but they have to pay for it, and so it was quite a considerable sum, but there are also other things. But there are also other things that they would have to get assessed, such as the owner of the property, moving the land. So there are actually two other councils that they would have to discuss that way as well. So literally, I mean, that is that they were entitled to ask for a valuation, which they made for when we see it. And also that information for us. This is the valuation of land.
That's right. Yeah, just to confirm, like the council have a similar process where you do an application for something. There are costs associated with that. There's no guarantee that it will go through. Some other thing with Kiltwood, the other councils in this state. Can I suggest, colleagues, that we take the suggestion made by councillor James and look at the first point to confirm that the land is surplus to need. If it is surplus to need, at this stage, ends the issue as far as we're concerned tonight. Do I propose a pitch? In the absence of which, can I make up? You know, not cutting you off at all, please, but can I help a second bit perhaps by suggesting that you... This is...
Councillor, I think it's...
That's not quite true. I just want to propose that the land is not surplus to the clients. I'm happy it's a chair, doesn't have to make a proposal. I'm sorry, it's a second proposal, please. There is. I'll take the one for councillor Calum, apologies, colleagues. What's the proposal? The proposal is that the land is not surplus to need and therefore should not be offered for sale. Does anyone wish to speak further? We should be able to go on, but we will proceed to a vote on that issue. Okay, those in favour of the proposal, please, which is to say that the council states that a land is not surplus to need and therefore there is no proposal for sale. Thank you very much indeed. I think, you know, so that's the decision. Thanks very much, colleagues. So that's a very good story. I think that they want to come back to us on these. If there is an issue arising after that, we discuss and we check it of the recommendation. Councillor James, move the distance. I don't think we should have this.
Yes, I can absolutely remember to be honest.
Sorry, Roy, did we vote again? If so, I apologise. I failed to see that and I called that until I was... Oh.
Could I ask, please, that councillors consider a recommendation of what you would like us to look at next? And what councillors would propose, we're going to get and see what we can do. And what would councillors want us to assume?
That's a right move.
Thank you, Mr May. I know that piece we're talking about, I have been up there before. And the square bit has got the benchy. People let their dogs walk in there, so it's like a dog run. I don't know what I said there, but so I'm not going to be able to fight the dogs and run around. Yeah, that's what the square bit is, benchy, that's dog run.
Yeah, that's a good one.
Okay, can I, I'm waiting for the council to ask how they can look and come back for some recommendations, see what we can do.
Any second of that. We'll start this now. You know, take that one.
So the recommendation is to be focused that the committee investigates potential, well, the word is just speaking out of my head. Remediation, mitigating, mitigating. Yes, mitigate, mitigating. And more messages, more messages. Thank you very much.
We're now being excited, aren't we? Not going to work to council. Do you have a thought?
Thank you, Mr May. Very happy with that suggestion. I've managed to pick a picture of the area on Google Maps, so I think it's an opportunity to explore what we've done. I think possibly, you know, the household will know the issues a lot better than any of us because they live there. So presumably, when the car communicates our decision tonight, or tomorrow, it would be really a good opportunity to say, despite the fact that we are, we made the decision that we have tonight, please do let us know their suggestions for improvements. You know, this isn't a case of goodbye. We're happy to work with them at the moment, to take some actions to address the noise issues and welcome their suggestions.
That's great. I can very help with that. I've got to answer, I've got to answer.
I'm so confused because I'm already thinking that there was no mention of noise, footballs, angulation about giving a feeling in a city. So as far as I'm, my reading may be, but it was about a visual map.
It was.
And so just to find to be the speculation, unless it's not that's come from other people. Speculation now that this residence is not your problem, so I'm a bit confused.
Well, I brought that out, that's how it's done to probably me that I'm confused because it was me who used what you described quite correctly, speculation. I simply observed that today there was a goal, a target against their war. And if anyone ever uses that goal, the ball would be hitting their wall, that's a simple science. Maybe that either the goal is never used or it's removed or they play with a balloon, not a football.
Maybe.
But I think the point is that we need to go back to this, to the residents and say, we're going to bring this what you want, but we are open to discussion to ameliorate the situation in some way. That's all we will say.
Well, I'm asking you to defend your...
It may be, and they may not say what they say, just remember, that's it. That's the subject. That's Taylor.
Well, I agree with everything you said there. And I think the council, I think we should go a mile from a reputational point of view. If somebody is trying to take the money, let's go a bit professionally and say, we're not letting you do that, but we are here to help you. Now, if at that point we can see that there's no help needed, we can retire with all it. I mean, if we just go clinical, reputational wise, I'll be standing in the pub with everybody saying negative things about the council again. I'd take it quite felt. So I'm just thinking, we walk a mile around in a yard, we can come out there smelling of roses. Thank you, Mr Taylor.
Good day.
Oh, it... I just, the proposal is that we consider something. How much more we can consider? Because I'm already in my business person and asked them that they're not the experts of the need department. And then my manager said, it's the problem we can discuss. But we can say, oh, we understand that it's a double problem. But sure, what we should be making and what we can discuss.
That's a right move. Well, the question is, I think the right thing to do, perhaps, go back to the household that is saying that we're not going to sell. And just mention the discussion, the possibility of any sort of noise happening in this result of all. Maybe the household did they know and they are using it at the right time? But I think just go back and ask the discussion about what was causing the problem. And the follow on, if there is, if there is, then, you know, that's a good point. That's a good one.
Um, I want to just say for the last three, as I was told, is that if we go back to the advocacy and find that the council made a decision that this is a let's not sell. Based on a little bit of that, land is scarce and we need all the things we need, so we're not going to sell. That's one thing. But rather than architectically, they just try to do cash, but they should have here, which is still consistent of the owner, of the property owner. Because after all, you want to buy this for parking, invest the money in it before you get a car and a van. So I could, as a investor, you might be a bit anxious if you don't put the money, okay, no, investors, that's a question. So I think that when a gentleman, you should say, okay, if there's a lot of issues about the area, what can we do to improve? We cannot tell it right and answer why. But if there's a lot of issues, what do you think we could suggest that it is the area to be more accommodating and less expensive, where it's a bit difficult to be found? And then open the door for us, I'll just take it from there and perhaps have a consultation in the area if you have any questions. Thank you.
Colleagues, I think we've given a really good hearing and listened, asked whether you are content to leave it that way. The town clerk replied stating that the decision we've made that should lead you over to them to come back to us with some further comments would be so rich. I don't think you need to do anything more, because if you behave in this way, you would come to be a little bit torse and upset. Unless you're unhappy with that, I'm going to leave it there.
If I'm not, excuse me. May I talk a second more, propose, with now as an own proposal? It would require a second, and therefore if I refuse, if I withdraw my second, it might ask that it is a valid motion. So it now allows, the decision, the matter has been made, hasn't it? The decision was firstly to confirm the land is surplus to need, that decision's been made.
The decision you made was that we would not sell the land.
Yes. So the second proposal we can just...
Thank you very much indeed. But that may last a bit. I don't know where I was just going a minute, but we're now, we're now happy to leave it in the hands of the town clerk. In the meantime, William, to our source, are you happy with that, Chris? And if you're able to minute that the way you would wish.
Yes.
Yes, thank you very much. Okay, on to our twenty points. This is the Queen Jubilee Project 2022. I think one of the keys of this before I go and write an explanation or comment is that this is kind of a two-part thing. So what can we do in 2021 and what can we do in 2022? I don't know if anyone wants to open this issue. Do you, Town Clerk?
I can do this, can we? What we're doing at the moment is, this has come out from many of about things we can be in which they want terms to consider planting a tree for the Jubilee next year. And it is just one part because we know that there's extended back holiday next year. And we are still waiting for the details of what events they will have to carry out over that one weekend to be brought forward by the National Pageant Master. I was expecting to potentially hear that line in the tree because normally they're, they're insidious running literally to anything like my way of nations tribute. So I was expecting something in the next couple of weeks on that. So this is really the first bit, which is about, did we want to focus on planting a tree to mark Queen's Platinum Jubilee? And if we would like to do that, where would we go to plant the tree? What kind of tree would you like? Also, if we enter part of the tree, I'm going to have like a memorial bench or a plaque or something like that goes within. And this would be happening between October, March, which is the planting season, although the actual Jubilee is in February.
Any further comments, please? Yes, Brenda?
Yeah, I think so, I think I answered, clearly said, I'd like to see more. And I believe if you come back and said, that would be lovely. And could we put it in a brief paper, I'm not sure of the... Because I think more alone with something that's the last thing is in the end, in the end, what's it going to be?
Good. I think most people in this room would be supportive of the idea of joining in with this project. So yes, it will be to plant the tree. I hope it's going to be a specimen tree and a place that can stand out in the crowd. So the big area, yes, could be, whatever type of tree you use, where, sorry, but, you know, I'm happy to support that. But I also think as a town, we ought to be doing a little more than just planting a tree. So hopefully, once you get a bit more guidance from the pageant master, what is it? I just think back 10 years, we had a wonderful tea on the corner here, following the market race. And then we got so on the corner. And I think the residents still have that pressure, they're not, that they would want to see something similar to celebrate. This is quite a unique anniversary. That's a good one.
Thank you, Mr May. It would be no surprise if we are going with Chair of Civic. I think this is an awesome idea and I think it's a fantastic opportunity to perhaps, as councillor writers correctly say, have a specimen tree. I'm inclined to use the phrase go wild or go by, let's go big. And I'm very mindful, this is probably going to shape people as Chair of Finance as well. But there has been considerable underspend in the last couple of years and transfers to reserves in terms of arrow seats travel. And it would be amazing if perhaps the Civic, as I now might call it, where Eck Heritage Events and Civic City were perhaps to look at this and maybe perhaps if we could utilise some of those reserves towards this. And councillor Rob, we're pleased to know, already have enough upcoming plans that we can possibly explore. Obviously, waiting for pageant masters' guidance, absolutely, this coming year, 18 months realistically. It's a fantastic opportunity to celebrate because it hasn't been seen in a lifetime. The Jubilee is a considerable event, it would be nice to mark that in an appropriate and distinctive manner.
Thank you very much. That's a good one, Jerry, please.
Thank you. Just went to that, re-organising the comments that way. One of the most memorable occasions I had, Mr May, was to help one on the street between town and the leisure centre in France. And it occurs to me, we've already had ceremonial tree plantings, in fact, I can't actually remember one. They must have happened. But I'm wondering if in the chair when we do this, we can give some thoughts, we invite some representatives from our town to join in with the celebrations we have. And with the tree planting, because coming up both this year and this next year, we do have some reasons to celebrate, frankly. And it's something we're called to. And I think this will be a really lovely project for our two towns to be involved in. It's just like early days.
Better not spend your...
Sorry. Stop, I'm afraid.
That's terrible, it's like... Well, we do have the opportunity to share our wonderful, sweet, sweet republics. So perhaps that's, I think, it's quite initially, it's a slight different situation. That's not good. I'm kind of feeling that we've got enough from you to say to go ahead with this. Are there any other comments in particular? Are there any comments of twisted concern, what different point of view? And if not, I'm going to suggest what we seem to have been, is yes, we're aware of the tree, yes, we're aware of the dating. And we went for two weeks to the lap and then we were more.
I think we also probably need to speak to our land officer and the chairman and perhaps speak to our friends in the local council to find out how we are confident, what we're suggesting, we go for, we'll ask them about it. And if that hair would be suitable to actually have one down there. And we'll find out what value we have price, it's like the larger, the best and more cost. Very challenging, actually, I think. So yes, we'll fall for that and then we'll bring back half findings on that to the council and the councils.
And no, she also comes and I'm happy to pick up the suggestion from councillor Trillby about inviting a contribution, some of that money. Inviting our two towns to take part. Right, thank you very much indeed. Let's move on to... Let's move on to item, uh, twenty one, which is community engagement to discuss legally any consultation or media release required. Any suggestions as to whether there should be any further review of this, please, colleagues?
I have asked the mayor of Westbury.
You have asked the mayor of Westbury and it is pending. Very good. I trust answer satisfied your answer, I've held the fort for at least ten minutes until this bit is over. Councillor, come on.
Yeah, and basically there's a question, I know the town clerk and, um, of course, it's been asked about three times. But ever since this message is at school, it's not, it's not, it's not, it's not, and they've obviously been, been parking similar lately. So that might be, that might be the, that might be the only meters, the little separation, might occupy the bed on. But doing schools or this, groups know about this. Um, we haven't got that out yet and I think we're going to want to see what the council wants to do first. I think this is being advertised far and wide, not just to councils. Um, it's, it's going across and it does say everyone from England who tries to discover the boroughs, villagers, towns, cities, county, schools, and corporates will be encouraged and partly, and I should make it, the schools will probably receive the area renovations.
Thank you very much. Uh, I'm happy to read that they're going to item twenty two, committee officers update.
Um, I don't, sorry, I don't have anything further.
Thank you very much. I will go on to item twenty three, um, but we've got a technical hitch in that the officer should not. So while that's happened, colleagues, we're now reading for you, it's a no outside and perhaps outside will be able to hear this. To consider resolving that, assured to the public audience, admission to meetings act nineteen sixty, the present public be excluded for any remaining items on business on the ground that the policy would prejudice to the public interest by the confidential nature of the business to be discussed.